We're going to call the meeting to our listening for questions.
I pledge my allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call. Commissioner McCown.
Here.
Commissioner Tannen.
Here.
Commissioner Hyden.
Here.
Commissioner Dunn. Commissioner Rushing.
Here.
Commissioner Greatham.
Here.
Commissioner Bowman.
Here.
Additions and additions changes to the agenda. If none, do I have most for approval?
Those approved.
In a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed. I defy the minutes of previous meetings I am prepared to meet.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve and file the minutes of the July 21st, 2016 commission meeting and the August 4th, 2016 standing committee meeting.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed. Item 6, proclamations and proclamations this evening. Item 7, consent agendas. Item A through H. Mr. Chairman, at this time I move to approve items 7A through 7H on the consent agenda.
Second.
Discussion on any of the items on the consent agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed. Item number 8, reports of standing and special committees. I will serve as Mr. Greatham. I'll take a fast time, Mr. Chairman.
I agree.
Commissioner McCown.
I just want to thank the township. I know we had a few little pickups here about wondering if we're going to have this meeting tonight or not, at what location. But Supervisor Lowers is with us here tonight, and Monica Stando is here. You are a trustee, as well as school board member. She's everything. Works for the health board, for the county. Monica wears a lot of hats, shoes, socks. She does it all for us. We're fortunate to have them in the township doing what they do.
Okay. Colonel?
I attended Officer's Meeting of Semco yesterday at the General Assembly. They elected new officers. And during the meeting, they complimented us once again for the General Assembly that was held, which was held at our convention center in Port Huron. Many of the dispense went on the here lady cruise of the Saint Clair River, sort of an economic and recreation cruise of the river. And it went very well. Coming up on Semco's agenda this year, two things. There's the southeastern Michigan wide transportation mileage question that's going to be on the ballot in five of our seven counties. It does not affect Saint Clair County or the North County. And they're beginning, taking the beginning steps to come up with all the new population projections for all of southeastern Michigan. And one of the things that they talked about was some of the first steps are to determine how various employers are doing and what their projections are for employees. And then they use those for whether employees grow. And that's a lot of the basis for the population projections. And even though our economy is coming back, the population is not coming back as fast as the economy itself is dollar wise. And one of the things that's happening across the country are the skilled jobs, highly educated jobs, people with college degrees. Those jobs are growing very quickly. And unskilled labor, labor job growth is substantially less. And so plenarily, they're saying they don't expect a bigger rebound in southeastern Michigan, probably the whole state of Michigan, as in other states, because our workforce is less educated, less skilled, older than in other states. Some of that was a problem with health migration, of how much educated workers and skilled workers. And when we were going to the convention center, we went out to try and recruit local contractors. We found a lot of them are downsized so much that a construction project this size of convention center, they didn't have the woodworks for it anymore. So I thought, you know, those were interesting items that I kind of bring back to the board.
It's interesting you say that because when I was up on Macklin Island, the number two guy who's essentially like the economic development guy for Oakland County was talking about, you know, didn't think Oakland County, you know, was tax based and anything else. They're having a horrible time trying to fill the job for it. And same thing, I started with Saint Clair County. Here's Oakland County that you presume, you know, is good over there with the engineering or so on and so forth, just because of so much, you know, the really great doing what they're happening. You know, people are moving away trying to get them to move back. So.
You know, if these people have moved to other areas of the country and they found successful employment in the like the communities they're in, what is the incentive to come back to a state that, you know, when the country gets cold, we get a, we get in a horn here?
Yeah.
We're working on it. We serve on the planning mission in our little township. We have Dave Struck here. You know, we get a lot of information from Semco. They're doing an excellent job. For all we're going through the master plan and forward back to the county, we're looking at about a 20-year window of pretty much stagnant growth variety township, just for our master plan, one of the neighboring communities here. But I imagine that's pretty much the session of problems in that one.
You want to ask Tom?
I got to.
Are you thinking of going back to work, Tom?
No. I don't see any jobs out there that I'd really be interested in.
Howard, do you got anything?
Yeah. I was displaced, but it wasn't by the county.
The voters?
No. I just want to comment on our health board meeting the other day. Monica was there. I'm really alarmed. Saint Clair County ranks 79th of the 83 counties in vaccination. And, I mean, it's, and some of the school districts in the county are, what's it, 30% unvaccinated? And so what I'm alarmed about is the fact that, you know, if some of these common childhood diseases starts through these communities, these schools, they're going to shut down the school because the kids aren't getting vaccinated, I wish.
Why aren't they? Is that, is that?
I have no idea.
Parents aren't doing it? It's too costly? The health department doesn't?
No. I don't think it's too costly. I don't think cost is an issue at all.
Childhood vaccinations are free. If insurance does not cover them, then they will be covered 100% at the health department.
Who does the reporting where we came up with the 79 out of 83 counties?
That's state reporting through MICERS.
The county doesn't do it?
The county submits to MICERS. And each doctor's office submits to them. Each provider.
It's serious.
And in your discussions at the county, you guys had no discussions on how this happens or how to correct it?
We had a lot of discussions, we had a lot of discussions on it, but the part of the problem is there's some, there's some people that have philosophical differences in beliefs in vaccinations. There are some people that have religious beliefs against vaccinations. Those generally are not the underlying, you know, in this area or in our county, it's mostly people that have philosophical differences.
Would you have any idea where we're telling this? Just for reference, that's Detroit.
I think they were, the city of Detroit was ahead of us.
They were ahead of us.
79 out of 83, they're not mine.
Yeah.
I guess we're also learned, for teenagers, they have a vaccine to prevent cervical cancer. And I can't remember what it is for guys, but both male and female should get this vaccine.
HpV.
And not getting a vaccine to protect you from cancer, I just find that unbelievable.
Well, just on the surface, look at it, 79 out of 83. I mean, you take the city of Port Huron, Marysville, Saint Clair, K-Pac, Yale, Army, not Army, but we got that school district. I just don't see where we have a trouble area in Saint Clair County, how we got to 79 out of 83.
Well, actually, Port Huron, city of Port Huron does very well. In our statistics that we were shown, it was actually the western side of the county that was worse than the eastern side of the county.
But you only have 2,000 people in township. Must've got 3,000, so I have 163,000.
79 out of 83, that's a number that are given against the drinking system.
Yeah.
70, 70, 83, it's pretty good.
Well, I'm also, the other thing that I'm alarmed about, you know, if in these schools, you only have 30% of the youngsters, I mean, 30% are not vaccinated, then that's a huge number in a typical middle school or elementary school, I think. You know, and if they come to school and they have some common childhood disease, it's going to go through the whole thing. Well, I can't imagine a parent putting their child through hooping cough. I had hooping cough as a child. I can't imagine a parent putting their child through the prospects of getting polio. When I was in high school, we had the high school on the third floor. We had to carry one of the young men up the stairs every day. That was our job as students. Carry him up because he had polio. He couldn't walk. Well, when we got up there, he could walk in his crutches and that. Well, I understand today you don't see that, so people assume it's not a problem.
Does the county take by district, the seven districts of where we have, where we would have a concern, like District 6 of the six townships I have? I got a problem.
We didn't break it down like that.
They have those numbers, but they didn't break it down for us like that.
We get that. We're trying to address this.
Well, I think the way to address it is with school districts, that.
They have the, they're working on that currently. I mean, that was part of the conversation that, you know, it's, it's just a very hard struggle.
Could you work with that and get the information to Howard?
Yeah. My understanding about this problem though was that some of the rules or laws changed where now parents can't just exempt their children. They actually have to come in and meet with a professional.
That's correct.
Who informs them about the risks before they can exempt their children from the vaccination. And that supposedly is having some positive impact.
It has.
You can't attend school without your vaccinations or your exemptions.
Before, you could fill out the form this Saturday. Now you have to, parents have to connect either a professional who explains what the risks are.
You want to, Howard?
No, that, I'm just. I got two things. Last Monday, I attended the Saint Clair County City, I should say, Saint Clair. Jeff Donaldson came in with the biologic, did a brownfield presentation to the city council. Did a really nice job. Saint Clair received a $1.1 million brownfield award, $550,000 grant, $550,000 alone specifically for the Saint Clair end project. It's one of the pieces that they were waiting for. But they came in and did, spent about 45 minutes, laid everything out on the brownfield basics. And there was a lot of question answers for the city council, because they haven't done brownfield in 20 years ever that they've ever done. So I told Jeff, I told Dave, did a really nice job. Jeff Donaldson, the biologic. So it was very good. Tuesday night, the Michigan Natural Trust Fund Board was in our community. The Michigan Natural Trust Fund Board travels around the state and hosts four or five meetings in the course of the year relating to fund projects. But on Tuesday, they got an opportunity to look at five or six different things that the trust fund has actually funded. And then they ended up at the lighthouse at 8:00 in the evening. I got a chance to talk to everybody involved in the trust fund, board members, people that actually worked with the DNR and so on and so forth. They were, I can't tell you how impressed they were with our county parks system and just how well the funds that the trust fund has invested and so on and so forth. And why that's so important is when, essentially when they're looking to fund your projects, submitted, you want to make sure you're good stewards of the funds and that you get considered for that. And I just, and they were sincere when they were, they'd been some other places that haven't done such a good job. And on Wednesday, they actually held a meeting at the convention center. So this is guys from all over the state. This is the first time they've actually been in Saint Clair County. As you may have seen me, Mark Schuessner, I just said that's a response. Mark was there, the staff, everybody else did just a good job. So it was really a good time for us to shine. That is my report.
Because Monday night, metro planning, I had, we had a meeting, what, no meeting in Yale, and the Dutch DOD, Riley Township was on board for the countywide. What, no meeting in Yale, Monday night? Supervisor was asking me, Mike, can I make the meeting there? I said, no, I'm here. Okay.
We are going to go to some citizens wishing to address board this time. It's an unfinished business.
You fell back there in the green shirt.
Just to clarify, we're getting to be a big problem with medical calls, our department. I don't know if you guys are real aware of, I mean, all townships are having this problem. Three quarters of our fire runs are medical calls. We're going to lose firemen over eventually when they're running. And half of those, Monica can address it better than I, are really not fire department needed for them. You know, they're just in dispatch because it's the quickest, easiest thing to do. And it's getting to be a real problem. And I don't know if that's been brought up to you guys after.
I have not personally. Is the dispatching end, did you say it's a dispatch issue or what?
It depends. It's a, there's a combination issue.
One of the problems that I encountered when I was interim Andrew of Elgin had was when we were in the recession, there were a lot of people, especially the construction workers, et cetera, that were available, respond to calls. We, when the economy was doing pretty well, we were scared to have a problem. Then when the economy went down, we were able to deal with the calls. Now that the economy's picked up and more people are employed full time and have jobs where their employer won't let them leave to respond to a call, it's become a problem. And I think it's a problem in the county and across the country. And the other problem is, is it takes up so much time and so much expense for people to get all the training that this state requires.
That. And also, we don't get picked for medical runs. I mean, it's getting to be a real drain on the fire department budget because three quarters of our runs are medical. And all we're really doing is helping tri-hospital look good because we're there way before them. And we, and there's times when we're really happy to go and glad we're there, but there's a lot of times that they really don't need to be there. And we can't limit how many guys come. But a lot of times, we'll have seven, eight guys come, and they're, they left what they're doing. They drove all the way here. And for two hours or an hour and a half, or they get turned around when they're here, and pretty soon they're just going to quit coming because.
Does that go back to usually we don't interact, but you know, different situation here? Is this, but going back to that, is this a dispatch? Is it a protocol issue somewhere? You said it's recently come to light. I mean, you're seeing a much higher volume than you have in the past?
Yeah, I think part of the problem is there's been a higher call volume for tri. And so a lot of times, the ambulances are pulled from K-Pac and Yale and they go towards the city. And so there's one ambulance that sits in Emmet. Well, then you're automatically going to have a delayed response for anything in this area or Yale or Berlin. So that's an automatic dispatch for the fire departments because they're already having a delayed response. So that's part of the problem. Then the other part of the problem, I think sometimes is on the dispatch end where they just, for whatever reason, they just dispatch us on the call.
What's happened when I was at Riley Township, what I wanted to do was, because I want everybody, the fire department, my wife was having an issue. There was 10 vehicles. We had concerns that people complaining, there's too many vehicles in our parking lot. Well, they only get billed for one, regardless. What Wales Township did is they contracted with the city of Memphis for their fire protection, but they do not have them do their medical runs. Now, that might save you, because you've got two issues. It might save on your firefighters to where you're not granting your fire department budget. They won't, you're still going to have your fire budget. Like Memphis, what I lived at Riley, we covered about 1/3 of the city of Memphis's fire budget, whether they have fire runs, medical runs. And they break it on a five year, but the total cost of the fire department is still going to be pretty close to the same, whether you're making those runs or not, you have the equipment cost. So it's an issue where you guys can potentially look at your individual. Wales made a decision, unless they've reverted back, that all their medical runs are done by, I believe Lennox. And with Riley, most of ours are Lennox also. The city of Memphis will come out, and we want them to come out currently. That's what Riley chooses. I believe Berlin pretty much does all theirs because they have a fire department there also. But you'll have to look at your own individual. But I believe Central Dispatch has instructions for the Wales Township, do not send Memphis Fire Department out on medical runs.
I think if you look at Port Huron, when Mike Reeves took over as public safety director, he cut all medical runs out. He just said, no more medical runs. It saved them a ton of money. But tri is in the, in the area a little closer than what they would be out this way. And that's your issue. I sat down with tri not too long ago because Clay was trying to take an ambulance and put it into service, which would have affected this area out this way. And we managed to, I think, put that on hold. But in so doing, looking at all of the records from tri, and I looked through everything there, they have, they are meeting the state criteria on all of their runs, with the exception of Carson's Island. That's the only place that they get stuck sometimes. And they're claiming that they have a 95% response time within the guidelines that the state mandates, even out in this area out here. So I don't know. I mean, do you, maybe you could sit down with Ken and talk to him about that. Find out, maybe he could position that other bus in a different location if one of the others leaves. I know that when the one in Clay leaves, the one over in Iowa runs over to Shea Road and Sarvo, and it sits there, and vice versa. So those things, they're constantly repositioning those buses so that if one goes out, one is in a better position running. Talk to Ken maybe, and maybe he can position that to him in a better position. And that's much longer to think of unless you just say to your firefighters, we're not going on medical runs. And we, I shouldn't say that out loud, but.
Well, that kind of runs our citizens also, because when you're waiting 15 minutes, 20 minutes, 30 minutes for an ambulance, that is the difference between life and death. There's no doubt about that.
I understand.
I just want to be very clear. The county, when the ambulance service was not, you know, the dispatch, if it's a dispatch issue, and Greg is the representative on the dispatch, you know, to bring that up and talk about that. But like you said, that is the issue. But the ambulance piece is a, is a separate.
They provide wonderful service. Don't misunderstand that at all, because they are wonderful to work with. But we'll work on the dispatch.
Dispatch too.
We'll work on the dispatch.
We have worked on it.
I'd say give chemical and not give.
Your calling was great. We're going to move into new business. It may look like we go through this stuff pretty quick, but all this stuff was before us at a previous meeting. And then it gets pushed into the full board. So these things have been discussed. This is the final answer this evening. So item number eight, approval of county dispersment for July 2016.
This time I'd like to move to approve the county dispersments for July 2016 in the amount of $10,120,811.10.
For our discussion on the roll call. Commissioner Tannen.
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing.
Yes.
Commissioner Greatham.
Yes.
Commissioner Hyden.
Yes.
Commissioner McCown.
Yes.
Chairman Bowman.
Yes.
Item B, the library board reappointment.
Mr. Chairman, I move to reappoint Arlene Marzetti, District 2, to the library board for a five-year term, expiring August 26, 2021. Support?
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed. Item C, the 2016 Emergency Management Performance Grant for reappointment.
I move to approve the fiscal year 2016 Emergency Management Performance Grant in the amount of $40,708. Support?
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed. Item D, the Cooperative Office Supply Agreement with Office Stifel.
This time I'd like to move to approve the Cooperative Office Supply Contract with Office Stifel, Office Max, for a term to 6/30/2018 in the amount of $161,000.
Support? Discussion. Roll call. Commissioner Greatham.
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing.
Yes.
Commissioner Hyden.
Yes.
Commissioner Tannen.
Yes.
Commissioner McCown.
Yes.
Chairman Bowman.
Yes.
Item E, the Honeywell HVAC Building Management Conversion expansion.
Mr. Chairman, at this time I move to approve the Honeywell proposal to convert and expand the Honeywell HVAC Building Management System in the amount not to exceed $53,974.
Support? Discussion. Roll call. Commissioner Hyden.
Yes.
Commissioner Greatham.
Yes.
Commissioner McCown.
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing.
Yes.
Commissioner Tannen.
Yes.
Chairman Bowman.
Yes.
Item F, Resolution 16-21, the 2016 Economic Adjustment Assistance Program Grant Application, the economic impact study for the Saint Clair Power Plant closure.
Mr. Chair, I would move the adoption of Resolution 16-21, authorizing the Metro Power Planting Commission to apply for the U.S. EDA Economic Adjustment Assistance Fund in an amount not to exceed $100,000 regarding the Saint Clair Power Plant closure.
Support? Mr. Chairman?
I was going to talk about it too. I attended, Randy Fernandez and myself attended a meeting down in the River Rouge, probably two, three weeks ago. And it was put on by a group. There's probably 70, 80 people down there. There's three power plants that are going to be closed, marked for closure. One is the Saint Clair plant, one is the River Rouge plant, and one is the Trent plant. Okay? River Rouge is in very early stages of the plant closure and so on and so forth. And we, me and I, sat through, so pretty much an all-day deal. And then some of the things came out to tell the Saint Clair County story as far as DTE, how the plant closure went in the areas. Because they're kind of going through all the stuff that we went in the areas of, you know, everybody's freaking out about tearing the plant down. And, you know, I told them, you know, kind of how it went well for us. And DT has always done a fantastic job of telling us where they're at in the process, you know, when we do the plant closures, you know, just all of the, some states is not so good. They hit people in from other places, other, that, you know, represented a lot of different organizations and how the communication between the utility companies and the local development is not good. But somebody from Skegum was there, the Consumers Energy was in there. They said they have excellent experience with their own Consumers Energy, so on and so forth. As a follow-up to that meeting, actually, they had the economic development, the federal economic development, people were at that, talking about the federal assistance for the program, that they had monies available, but you had to make the 50% match. After that meeting got done, Detroit Edison actually had a conference call, myself, Trent, the respective areas and the other communities, and they had offered up the matching monies to go to help apply for this. And so I then put in touch with Dave and Dan Casey to, you know, to look through the details of it and everything else. So this is completely funded by DTE unmatched to whatever some of the U.S. EDA funds. And it's essentially to look at redevelopments of these. There's going to be a lot of power plants that are going to be coming down in Michigan. And this is, you know, the redevelopment piece of it is, is, it's going to be a big issue.
When I was reading this report, this grant application, talked about this plant that was closed could result in a loss of $1.3 million in county taxes. I got hold of our county administrator and I asked him what the impact would be on the county general fund. It was $913,000. So if, if we had a situation where the plant was going to close sooner, that's the type of budget cut that we would have to make to continue to balance our budget. These are, these are huge parts of our tax base. One of the, one of the things that I found out, you know, I represent Fort Gratchit Township, and we have the biggest retail base in the county there. And I found out that, in looking at the taxes in the county, that the Fort Gratchit retail tax base is bigger than the industrial tax base of the whole county, if you take out the two power plants. So it's not really that Fort Gratchit's retail base is that great. It's that our industrial base is so.
base is so low. And then getting back to our earlier conversation about population, if they don't have an industrial base, where are the people going to work? Where are they going to live? And that's how it's at. Yeah, DT, if you look, I think they're 11% of our total SEV in St. Clair County, Detroit Edison, which is huge. You, you read in your memo, that plant's 40% of East China's budget, which is, you know, try and cut 40% out of your budget, that's, that's hard to do. Harbor Beach is 80%, this River Rouge, Trenton, they're crazy, you know, they're 40, 50% of these guys' budgets, so on and so forth. But I can tell you that we've been working on, they are going to be, and this is no big secret, they are going to be building a plant somewhere in this region, somewhere, I should say, the eastern side to one plant to take care of the power that's coming out of line of those three plants. Thing that we have to do, and we got to continually work with them, is hopefully we can get to rebuild. There is a six or $720,000 plant that's going to be built somewhere. So we've been in constant contact with DT, from, I spoke to the president, to the one guy, the two guy, all the government affairs folks and things. And, you know, we do have a lot of infrastructure currently in place, done with that St. Clair plant as far as transmission lines and a lot of those other things, but to try to replace that kind of tax base, something ain't going to happen. So... Well, and if you superimpose that on what happened to our taxable value of just our homes in the county, it's going to be 2027 before we get back to collecting prompter taxes on homes and those kinds of assets in the county that we got in 2008. And then you superimpose another million, three, okay, whatever, it's, it's going to be tough. Seeing to that meeting, we're, though I honestly, way ahead of where they lose Trenton, they're just starting the early steps of it, you know, and I don't think they're necessarily giving a lot of support from the county, you know, when we talked about, when we talked about the grant, first thing, of course, I said, well, Dave Stark said you write the grant. Dan Casey, right? These, these people are trying to internally, you know, put these grants and get them together and things like that. We're fortunate that at the county's level, we understand the impact, that we have the ability to, to, to participate, because we know how big it is for us, right? I can assure you that the other counties were not in that room for their respective communities, so...
Can I ask either here or Dave, if you get the grant and want it put together and you do the study, how deep is that study going to go? Is it going to go all the way down to all of the communities? Is it going to reach beyond, you know, if you cut out this tax, there's the snowball effect where it affects so many different things down the line? Is this going to be a full-depth study?
Yes. So the intent of the study is to look at all of those different layers. Obviously, the loss of tax base is a huge, I think it's going to be a huge impact, and then looking at the multiplier effects beyond that. So, yeah, you'll be looking at surrounding communities, school districts, how those, those entities will be impacted. It's meant to be comprehensive.
Now, correct me if I'm wrong, but East China would be protected because they're guaranteed their money? The school system?
The school district? Yeah, they're, you know, and I don't know all the ins and outs of that, that relationship, but, yeah, there's a certain percentage of funding that they're guaranteed, but certainly about the other...
Correct me if I'm wrong, the bond and debt, so whether, you know, we have, that's a different animal, or if you take that...
18 mils?
No, the school. If this school has, you know, five mils, four operations, whatever it is, that's, that's a big, that's a big job.
Other millions.
Yeah, the amount, just these things you're going to need.
You know, and as I mentioned too, you know, the supplier network, that, the businesses that work with DT, they're going to have a huge impact as well. So the intent of the study is to get out in front of that, identify what all those scenarios will be, and then the study's going to be tied to the comprehensive economic development strategies that are approved by the U.S. EDA, and we're part of Region Six, you know, with the Accelerate Plan as well as SYMPAT. So if there's projects within each of those plans that are already approved by U.S. EDA, and now we've got a U.S. EDA-funded impact study, you know, that, the presumption is that we've got a good rationale to make some things happen, depending on what the study finds out.
How long will it take to get that study done once it's started?
We're looking at likely less than a year. There'll be a period of time where we, I don't know if we have a qualified firm to do this study, and then from there, we're probably looking at six, eight months.
At our Metropolitan Planning Meeting, I think in your work report, you gave a comprehensive list of all the things that, that you'd be looking at in that study. And maybe that's something that you might want to share with the commissioners, because it is comprehensive what they're looking at in the study.
Sure. I can share that with you, and ultimately, you know, working at the build in RFP, and that will detail everything that we want a firm to be able to do in that study. Once that's developed, obviously, we can show you what.
We're talking about the DT plant. Obviously, they had a big fire down there the other day, and, of course, I know 100 people that worked in that plant, but they couldn't say enough good things about the response from the fire departments. Jeff Friedland, how he coordinated, I talked to one of the leaders guys down there that was, you know, really big with the stuff, and just how well all the response piece of it went. And I've said this before, again, we, we, everybody in this room has sat through tabletop training exercises, so on and so forth, that probably been doing for 12 years, and we've never had to, you know, call in all the dogs, so to speak, and they had to do it on this one, and it performed. River District instantly set up triage, some of the hospital, called in all their medical staff, everybody, because they didn't know to the extent, they didn't know where the, you know, employees, workers, boom. That, the hospital was ready to go, you know, Friedland. When the power went down, this is because I actually was out on the water, I had video footage of the plant, I was right down there, they had a problem with the pump trucks, water trucks. Well, DT shut down, all their pumps were on electric. They had one gas power run that, that filled some of the water. So they were having issues supplying all the trucks and stuff. Well, Detroit brought their fire boat up, which was able to then, you know, assist. Canada brought over their big truck that, you know, and just, you guys got called, I know they moved resources around all over the county and everything else. Just the whole, you know, disaster plan call, whatever you may, it executed, managed us really, really good. And they had a lot of good things to say. They are going to be at the next emergency management meeting September 8, something like that. Couple of officials from DT are going to be there to tell their side of the story from the response efforts and those types of things. And it was, it was really, really good, so kudos to all of them.
Just to give another kudos to them, you know, when you think about everybody that responds, that's one thing. I mean, it's great that everybody comes from the area, but if you're standing there and you're in charge of fighting this thing, and there's 50 trucks out there all saying, hey, can I help you put the fire out? I mean, you have to be able to make this stuff all work. You've got to have your triage unit set, you've got to have the hospital ready to go, you've got to have your ambulances over here ready to go, you've got to have the fire trucks here, you've got to have demand lines working, and you've got to know where it all is. It's just, I've been through some of these tabletop exercises you're talking about, it's just amazing that you can bring that kind of stuff together and make and operate in a smooth, seamless fashion. I think they did a similar thing out in Yale. There was the, my head fighter downtown Yale, they had a huge response, and it seemed like most everything worked pretty well to the point that, you know, you weren't tripping over each other and people knew what they were doing.
Okay. We're going to move on. Actually, you know what, did I get the motion?
You got the motion.
You did vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed. Item number 12, the administrators' report.
Earlier this week, my office met with the auditors to do our post-audit review, and the auditors are scheduled to come to your September committee meeting to present the audit for 2015. Our coast-to-coast drug plan that the board previously approved, the discount drug program that citizens can use, is ready to roll out. There'll be a press release that will be going out within the next two weeks that will let individuals know how they can sign up and what the benefits are. They are able to go online and print off and download cards, or there will be hard cards available to them. But that press release should be going out in about two weeks. The actuarial presentation is then scheduled for September 13 at 10:00 a.m. in the county boardroom, so hopefully everybody can claim to attend. Our CIP process is underway. There's been about 23 projects submitted. A group will be meeting within the next month to go through and evaluate and score the projects, and then they will be presented to the board sometime later this fall. The budget is for 2017 is underway, and it's pretty close to complete. I'm waiting on a few more figures to come in. Our cost allocation plan, I received a draft of it earlier this week, but there's a few changes that need to be worked through. And once I have that figure, probably October is when I will have the general fund budget to the board. And that's it.
Any questions for Kerry?
Hope we accept the administrative report as presented.
For... All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed. Miscellaneous business, any miscellaneous business coming for us? Okay, great.
I got a letter that it's addressed to all the commissioners, and so I'm going to just give it to Kerry and have her send a copy to everybody later. But actually, it's our supervisor's wife. Mike points to these different things, because there's jobs to do. She works with the, with the county farm bureau, and they are having their six annual county farm bureau's Project Red, which is the Rural Education Day, and it's going to be held on Wednesday, September 21st, in Goodell's Park. And all of the fourth graders from the county come out to the park that day, and they have different stations set up. And it's, it's very interesting. I mean, they, there's different programs about all the different agriculture. There's going to be people who have cows there, and they'll have a calf there, and they have presentations on corn and beans and beets and everything to do with agriculture. And they have all these stations set up that the kids go through, and then they have lunch. And they come in two different shifts. I think there's 600 kids, they can't handle them all at once, so they come in two different times. So there's an invitation from Stacy to all of you, if you would like to attend, and if you would like to help, she would love it, because what they're looking for is people that can take these kids from station to station. There, you know, there's going to be, their teachers will be with them, but they want somebody from their group. They'll give you a beautiful red shirt that you can wear and be the leader. And you just take them from station to station, and then there's presenters at each station. So if anybody has some interest, you get to see not only the county park, but you get to see all the kids there. It's, it's interesting.
Does the red shirt go over the overalls, or the overalls go over the red shirt?
Well, it depends. The straw will be sticking out, and your shirt stays. It's a you, though, because I'm not. But I'm going to give this to Kerry to take back, and she can send a copy to everybody so you have it.
Okay. Receive and file.
This time I'd like to move to receive and file packets that were sent to commissioners, packets at their places, and any other information presented.
Support. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Adjournments. Hope we adjourned.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.